Hi, it's time. I'm already getting messages of people saying they can't get on the review. It's right now. Hi, it is 6:00 PM Eastern Time. This is, you guys know, this is the REMAR Review Advanced Study Session. And tonight actually is the homework review. So this is the night for you guys to be able to see if you were able to demonstrate your lessons that we learned. Hi, everybody, come on in and say hello to everyone throughout the first and second day of our studying. So tonight is the homework review. I'm Regina Cowan. I'm happy to be with you here this evening. Are you guys ready to learn? Because tonight I have a wonderful surprise for you. And that's Mark behind me. And so he's not the surprise, though. He is here, but he's not the surprise. But we are, you got your self-study package, you guys? Okay, I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna tell everybody that has the package. I will be talking about how I want you to study and how you should be using those resources, because I'm getting a lot of questions about it. So we will go over that tonight. Hi, Rose, hi Tiffany, hi Maria. I have people on here, I recognize these names. I have people on here who have already passed their NCLEX, yet they're here studying with me. So I am just amazed that you guys still are continuing to study. That's amazing. So I also want you to be contributing and teaching to everyone here, okay? Hello, Michelle, hi Phyllis. Okay, we are gonna get started. People are coming in, the number is climbing, climbing, climbing for the review. So that is wonderful. Hi Miranda, hey, hey Nika, Tiffany, how you doing? Is Crystal here? Where you guys from? I know, I do like to see, hi Mike, see, Mike said, I'm from Jacksonville. He just let me know, he just let me know. Hi, are you, okay? Dania, your son graduated? Excellent, that's amazing. And you know what? I told Mark that I am, I want to have, I wanna do a prayer, people are, I wanna do a prayer tonight, because I know I have nursing students who are watching this, and I have nursing students who are sick right now, and they're taking time to deal with pain issues. I have nursing students who have a lot of different challenges going on, and they're taking their time out with us all here today. So I'm very proud of you guys. I just wanna say a prayer that we are able to get what we need to do tonight. Okay, Charlotte from Tampa, Kathleen Fort Lauderdale. I have Eunice from Nigeria. You're really, you're really from Nigeria, oh my goodness, and watching here, alright? What time is it in Nigeria? Cause I don't know. Wanika from Miami, Jocelyn from Florida. We have so many different, a lot of Florida in the house tonight. We have so many different nurses from all over studying with us. Hi Mandy, this is the biggest, this is the biggest, biggest, biggest study session of nurses that I see. Rhonda and her Philadelphia Eagles, alright. Are you guys in the Super Bowl? Are they in the Super Bowl? I can't remember. Okay, Tricia, New Jersey. I'm just shouting out everybody, because I really wish I could say everybody's name, because you all are important to me. You really, really are. It's 11 o'clock in Nigeria. Oh my goodness, alright, oh my goodness, that's so, Trinidad? Lee Anne Henry is from Trinidad. Okay, Kamal from Wisconsin, yes, Ohio, Maria, we're from Ohio, so Ohio, stand up. Come on in, come on in, Danae, they are in, okay, there aren't, okay. So I don't, I guess we're all rooting for the Philadelphia Eagles here tonight in the Super Bowl. So, alright, okay, Mark? I'm skipping you? I'm not, praise, praise, I'm not skipping you guys. Alright, but we are gonna get started. We are gonna get started. I'm just reading everybody's, look, look, wait, from New York, New York, New York. Okay, alright, you take, you take over right now, let me get up.
Alright, cool, guys, you ready to get started? Let's go ahead and get started with the word of prayer, then I have some really great news for you. And then I'm gonna disappear for a little while, and your teacher will be in front of you. And then I'll come back on at the very end, just with some words of encouragement, and hopefully insight to help take you to the next, next phase of your journey. Alright, so let's go ahead and get started with the word of prayer. If you are driving, keep your eyes open. The Bible says, watch and pray, right? So let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for just an opportunity to come together with like-minded individuals that are striving towards a certain goal and a sure destination. Lord, ask that you would order their steps so that the things that they want are things that are within your will. And if that's the case, Lord, then there will be no problem in achieving it, because what your word says will come true. So I thank you just for this opportunity. Give them insight that they didn't have before, in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright, cool, so let's get started. We have some really great news for you. This is the fourth day, the final day of the REMAR Advanced Study Session, and we are having some great testimonials and success stories for you. So today is the first day of February. Just to give you some stats and updates, might, if you're following the Facebook page, you've seen this already. At the end of, at the end of December, we had 125,000 individuals on our Facebook page, REMAR nurses that are engaging with us, tracking with us on a regular basis. Now that's at 131,000 individuals, and it's growing every single day, so thank you for that. Also, something very else amazing as well is that for every day of the month in January, we had a testimonial of somebody that posted to the page of passing NCLEX, either a page review, a testimonial, or a message on the backend. So there were actually 35 new testimonials for the month of January. So that's more than one per day. Now, today is the first day of February. If you're watching this later on, today is February 1st, and already we're starting the month off like amazing, right? Amazing, right? This is the year for you to reach your goals, to achieve the things that you want to do. This is the year to do it, right? So not just passing NCLEX, but taking it to the next level and reaching your goal. So today's day one on February, and already we have three new testimonials on the first day of the month. Alright, so we're gonna take a second, I'm gonna shout these, shout the, these REMAR nurses out. I wanna celebrate them and congratulate them on their journey. So I'm gonna go to the screen and share that with you. We're gonna solo. So first testimonial, congratulations, Nurse Eunice RN. She says, I passed NCLEX RN in 75 questions. She watched all of the seven days of NCLEX review. She bought the DVD self-study program. Now she had to test within two weeks of buying the program, so she wasn't able to follow the calendar, but she made it happen, right? It says that this review made her confident. All she did was read Quick Facts, watched the DVDs, and did the workbook and some practice questions. Thank you, REMAR. So we wanna say congratulations to Nurse Eunice. And she actually shares, she actually shares her, her quick results, right? So that's what you wanna see after you take NCLEX. She had her PN in 2013, and now as of January 26th, she's passed her RN. So congratulations.
Amazing.
Big shout out, everybody say congratulations.
She passed NCLEX two times.
Twice, right?
She passed NCLEX twice.
Alright, our next nurse is Nurse Rivers. Nurse Rivers, let's see what she has. She says she passed NCLEX on January 30th, 2018. What was that, Tuesday?
Yeah, just recently.
It's like two days ago, she passed NCLEX.
Oh yeah, okay.
But listen to this, guys, listen to this. Says she graduated in August of 2008.
Nine years?
This is 2018, she graduated in 2008.
Oh, 10 years.
Just about 10 years, guys. She's been out of school for 10 years. This is amazing, okay? God is good. We're glad that she has achieved her goal. Let's read the full testimonial. Says she graduated in August of 2008, and it's all because of REMAR. She says she took it for the first time in March of 2017 and failed. She attended the seven days of NCLEX. She did the Black Friday, she did the boot camp, and the Advanced Study Event, which is right now. And she says, I wanna thank you Regina for having such a wonderful DVD system. It was so easy to follow. Thank you Regina. So that is, that's just amazing. She graduated almost 10 years ago and passed NCLEX.
Insane.
That, I mean, that has to really, you know, drive you. If you have tested before, if you've been out of school. In fact, on average, our nurses have been out of school for about three to four years, and tested two to three times before finding REMAR Review and passing NCLEX. Our final shout out today goes to Nurse Desir. Congratulations to Nurse Desir, she says, will I pronounce it a little differently?
No, no, no.
Just here.
I know her first name, though.
Okay, okay. And so this is what she says, right? She passed her LPN. She says, well, I can proudly say that I'm a nurse now, thanks to REMAR Review. She got 85 questions, and before the computer shut off. Throughout the test, all she heard was Regina's voice, and said that she's been following her for about four months. She got the DVD program, watched it over and over until yesterday, when she tested. I just wanna thank the whole REMAR crew. And if it wasn't for you, I may have been a repeat test taker. Anytime I emailed her, she responded, clarifying questions that she had. I couldn't thank you guys enough. And she says, in her, in her Black History voice, as a nurse now, right? So she's a REMAR nurse, so we are so happy for her. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. And we wanna congratulate you in advance for working towards your goals, because we know that you're gonna get there, right?
Yes.
So any questions that you have, any support that you need, REMAR, it's not just a study system, it's also a support system to help get you to where you need to be. So that's all for me with the good news in terms of NCLEX. Let's keep growing, keep building together, and I'll see you at the end of the lesson.
Yes. Alright, so I just want to say, thank you, Mark, for that. But I just wanna say that you guys have this amazing opportunity to take this test. It's like, we cannot look at it as like, oh, it's something I gotta do. But actually, it's something that you get to do, you get to do. And it is really, I think it's really a blessing to be in a situation where you can, where you can test and have an opportunity to demonstrate your competency. I get messages from people all the time who are just trying to get into nursing school, who are looking for a direction into nursing school. And you guys have already gotten into nursing school. You've done the work, you have passed your exit exams, and now you have this amazing opportunity to take the state boards. So I want us to look at it in that way and motivate ourselves to get it done, get it done. And I know, like I said, you guys are overcoming tremendous obstacles already just to be here. So I know you can pass the test, because you've already done, you've already done harder things in your life already, and you've come out successful. So this is another opportunity for you to prove your strength, okay? Prove your strength. So congratulations again to everyone who has passed. It is time, you guys, it's time, is that time, alright? For us to go into our lesson. And of course, this lesson is brought to you by Quick Facts for NCLEX. This is the straight-to-the-point nursing content. Right now, it is on sale for a wonderful price of $18. And we're doing that so that you guys can get this book brand-new, and you can see for yourselves, you're able to see for yourselves how valuable it will be in your studying. I based tonight off of this book. And a lot of you guys have the book, and some of you guys don't have it. If you don't have it, you just go to the website, remarreview.com, pick it up, okay? And you're able to see how we take the content and we apply it, okay? So that's my, that's my goal for you guys tonight. And I worked really hard on tonight's presentation. So let's go. It's homework time, it's homework time. Get out your worksheets. You have to have your worksheet tonight, because if you don't have it, it will be hard for you to follow along with this presentation. So make sure that you have it out. Most importantly, make sure that you attempt to do some of it, okay? Some of it. So this is my homework for tonight. I know some of you guys are testing, and I've been requested to do a med surg review. So I got a couple requests where people are testing next week, are testing in two weeks, and they're like, Regina, I need some more med surg stuff for you guys. So I wanna start this, I wanna start this study session off with a med surg review. Are you guys ready? This is actually not part of the handout, but it will be part of our study sessions tonight. So put on your thinking caps. I need my REMAR nurses to really share this video, of course, yes, Mark. I need my REMAR nurses to share this video. We're about to do a med surg review in the form of a case study. And I need you guys to be able to help me teach and work through this scenario. Are you guys ready? Just put hearts on the screen if you're ready. Let me know you're ready here, okay? Yeah, they're ready for everything. Jevon, I know, I know, Jevon, you ready, you're ready. Denise, okay, are you guys ready? You ready, you ready, you ready? Alright, okay, you're at work. No, you, okay, if you're at work, you have to take care of your patients, but just try to listen in if you can. Okay, here we go. And bam, okay, here is our case study. Guys, we have a nurse enters a home and finds a man with trouble breathing. 77-year-old man is sitting upright. He states he cannot catch his breath even with an inhaler. The patient is diaphoretic and states he feels hot. What's going on here? I'm gonna read it again. A nurse enters a home and finds a man with trouble breathing. 77-year-old man is sitting upright. He states he cannot catch his breath even with an inhaler. The patient is diaphoretic and feels, states he feels hot. Alright, REMAR nurses, before assessing the patient, which of the following personal protective equipment should the nurse don? Select all that apply. A, gloves. B, goggles. C, mask. D, hair cover. E, high-vis vest. This is not on the handout. This is our case study for this evening. We have this patient, a nurse is in his house. I'm asking, what does the nurse need to put on based off of what we know about this patient? Based off of what you know about this patient, what do we need to put on, okay? From the previous information, we come into the patient's home, sitting upright. They say they cannot breathe even with an inhaler. What do we need to put on? What do we need to put on? A, gloves, B, goggles, C, mask, D, hair cover, E, high-vis vest. And I see people with one answer, but I want you to take a look at this again, because if you just put one answer, that's not gonna be right. Have I seen the right answer? I have not, I haven't seen the right answer yet. Come on, REMAR nurses, come on. This, I want you guys to really critically think here. Okay? This is where we apply what we know. Alright, I gotta, I gotta move on. So I'm gonna give you guys the right answer. Here we go. This is what, I'm trying to wait for everybody to put their answers up, so you guys can really critically think. This is the correct answer, okay? Right here. Before you assess this patient, you need to have on gloves, goggles, and a mask, okay? Gloves, goggles, and a mask. This patient says, I can't breathe. I can't breathe even with my inhaler. This is an elderly gentleman. What are some of the things he could have going on? You know, he could be infectious, we don't know. So the most prudent thing for us to do, especially if we're going to be having close contact with him, if we're gonna be in his personal space, right? We need to have our gloves on, we need to have our eyes covered, we need to have our mouth covered, okay? Alright, and nose too, all the openings. So that is the correct answer right there, gloves, goggles, and mask. You don't need to have your hair covered, and you don't need a high-visibility vest. Did you guys know a high-visibility vest was? That is for running, okay? I just needed another answer. But the goggles, people were asking me, why goggles? Why goggles? Because goggles protect your eyes. And if somebody sneezes in your face and it gets in your eyes, or if this man decides to cough up blood all over you, you wanna have your eyes protected, right? Alright, okay. Let's keep going, though, let's keep going. Alright, let's keep going. Now. We're continuing on with this patient. We're continuing on with this patient. It says, the 77-year-old male was admitted with, check out his symptoms. He was admitted with shortness of breath, vomiting, this is a case study, weight loss, and progressively worsening dysphagia. Based on the patient's history, an urgent gastro, gastroscopie, sorry, was performed, which revealed his esophagus to be normal. An endoscope was retracted to inspect the larynx and vocal cord, which revealed a remarkable degree of symmetrical swelling with vocal cords hardly visible. After the procedure, the patient developed stridor. Which diagnosis should the nurse expect? Let me read it again. The 77-year-old male was admitted with shortness of breath, vomiting, weight loss, and progressively worsening dysphagia. I see you guys. Based on the patient's history, an urgent gastroscopie was performed, which revealed his esophagus to be normal. An endoscope was retracted to inspect the larynx, and vocal cord revealed a remarkable degree of symmetrical swelling with vocal cords hardly visible. After the procedure, the patient developed stridor. Which diagnosis should the nurse expect? A, pneumonia. B, influenza. C, asthma. Or D, epiglottitis. And this would be, for you guys who know the information, this would be a dead giveaway of the correct answer, okay? This would be a dead giveaway of the correct answer based on the patient's condition, based on the patient's conditioning and the symptoms that they are presenting with. So I see you guys, the correct answer is epiglottitis. And you guys, this is one of those conditions you have to be able to recognize based off the symptoms, okay? And if you guys have the Quick Facts book, you know, there is a section, a complete section on Quick Facts about epiglottitis, alright? So for those of you who did not get the answer right, take a moment and make sure that you study that section, alright? Because this is how you, did you guys get it right? No, no, the symptoms are gonna be the same. Children do tend to get epiglottitis more frequently, but adults, any age can get epiglottitis, okay? Any age group can get epiglottitis, especially as susceptible populations like, like the elderly. Okay, so did you get it right? Yes, okay. So let me, would you guys like to continue on with this case study? This man, he had a lot going on. We found him at home, he was admitted. Okay, let me just show you this, okay? This is epiglottitis. Alright, let me make this a little. This is epiglottitis. So you can see, picture A is what the base of the tongue should look like, and you got a nice, pretty airway there, and you can see very clearly. And then you go over to picture B, and you have epiglottitis. So it makes more sense why the patient would be saying they cannot breathe. They cannot breathe. And also, their airway is closing. So we can see now how the airway is closing. And also, think about what you have to do for the treatment. Can I put my face in here, let's see? Think about what you have to do for the treatment for epiglottitis. Like you actually have to insert an artificial airway. But if you look at how the airway is closed, it's gonna be very hard to do that. So doctors sometimes, sometimes they have to go straight through the trachea in order to establish an airway, because the going down through the, the pharynx is just impossible, alright? It's just impossible. So here you guys can see a good picture of actually what is happening to the patient. And you should not, I love that, who said that I missed it? Chriselle said, don't put anything in the mouth. Don't put anything in the mouth unless you're getting ready to insert a tube down the patient's throat. Cause sometimes you can seize up, seize up that area, and the patient's airway will completely disappear. So that is a picture of epiglottitis for you guys. So good job, good job. Okay, so I'm gonna keep on going, I'm gonna keep on going, because there's more, there's more. Okay, here we go. Alright, so, perfect. The 77-year-old male, the 77-year-old male, he was intubated and stabilized. Per doctor's order, the patient was transferred to the MICU. Okay, there, the patient developed a left lower extremity thrombosis due to seven days of bed rest. The patient and family members were made aware. Upon the nurse completing a head-to-toe assessment, she observed the following, okay? So here we go, I'm gonna read it again. The 77-year-old male, he was intubated and stabilized. Per doctor's order, the patient was transferred to the MICU. There, the patient developed a left lower extremity thrombosis due to seven days of bed rest. The patient and the family members were made aware. Upon the nurse completing a head-to-toe assessment, she observed the following, okay? What order is most appropriate for the nurse to implement? Select all that apply. What order is most appropriate for the nurse to implement? Select all that apply. A, start heparin, IV stat for DVT. B, administer vitamin K1. C, administer coumadin PO. D, notify the physician. E, obtain an APTT, PT, INR. What order is most appropriate for the nurse to implement? Select all that apply. What does the nurse need to do here? This is the patient's leg. We know they have a DVT. Do we start heparin IV for the DVT? Do we administer vitamin K1? Do we administer coumadin PO? Do we notify the physician or obtain an APTT, PT, and INR? I see the answers, okay? What are you gonna do? You're the nurse. This is where we apply the content. This is why the content is so important, because you get into situ, you and your, you and your, oh my goodness. You in your room, just thinking you about to do a head-to-toe assessment, and bam! You pull the sheets back and you see this. What is this? Does anybody know what this is? Cause I haven't seen anybody say it. Does anybody know what is going on with this patient? This is my med surg review. I don't know how else to do it, but just throw it on you guys like this. What is this? What's going on with this man? No, 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 listen, listen. I see, I see the rationale. It looks like flabitis? Not really. I like that, I like that. Oh, it's not really flabitis, because, well, it's not. There's no inflammation of the vein. Okay, swollen legs, the cubitus ulcer. Ah, the case study is looking like the survey they did during my last exam. This is my, I wrote. This is my, I wrote this case study. This case study belongs to me. Alright, um bleeding under the skin. So E and D, I'm seeing E and D as choices, notify the physician, okay? The cubitus ulcer? Compartment syndrome, compartment syndrome, interesting. A clot that has ruptured. I'm I'm just reading, I'm just reading the choices that I have here because there are people who will watch this and they won't be able to see you guys as what you're writing, but this is what you're all thinking. And this is what I want. This is like a big think tank. I want us to be um in this advanced study session, really trying to figure out what we see here. Um and this is how NCLEX does you. It will put you in a situation where you've never been in before, and so you're trying to rely on your content in order to figure out what this is. Um is anybody in here using any kind of decision tree? Because I do not see at all how that would help you in this scenario, okay? Um you have to know exactly what this is based off of the patient's complaint uh and history, okay? Yes, and I see it coming in. You guys are doing a really good job now. I think everybody's getting it. You guys are helping each other because now I see all of the right answers. So somebody said something that triggered. Now all the right answers are coming in, okay? So I can go over the answer, okay? I can go over the answer with you guys. Here, what the nurse needs to do, other way, here what the nurse needs to do are these things. This patient clearly has a severe hematoma. It's like, it's so bad and they have had it for so long that the tissue is starting to die, okay? There's just so much blood there that the tissue is dying. So we do, we have a mix, um we have a mix of both of those, okay? So you have, and and what this, how we would describe this is not so much a, it is a hematoma underneath for sure, but what it has turned into is actually a lesion, okay? So it's a big lesion that is very painful and it is developed into necrotic tissue. So this patient would absolutely need vitamin K because this lets us know that they have a problem with bleeding. Okay, their blood is just super thin and it's all pooling to this area, alright? And I know if you said it, and if you first said it, I know, but I couldn't tell everybody. I had to wait till everybody thinks, alright? Uh we have to, certainly you want to notify the physician, absolutely, because this is considered a medical emergency, okay? And I I know, I wanted you guys to never have seen this before and I wanted you to have to use your content to figure it out, alright? Um and then, of course, we need to get some labs on this patient. We already know that their bleeding times are gonna be way inappropriate, uh way inappropriate. And I'm I'm getting the question, how can you administer uh vitamin K one without an order? Well, here it is, this patient had a D V T, right? This patient, we we got the information that they were diagnosed with a D V T. So what kind of medications do we put patients on who have D V Ts? What, what kind of medications? Because a medication has caused this situation for the patient. You don't just wake up with this, okay? Can I see the medications, please? I'm looking for two medications that will put a patient potentially in this situation, but there's one for sure. Okay, I see it, yep, okay. So let me uh let me further, I mean, I don't know if I have it here. This is called coumadin induced necrosis. And this actually will happen if a patient is uh on coumadin, on a blood thinner, and that's why it's so important for us to monitor labs. We don't just say just monitor labs just because the patient, you know, just to do it. There's actually a reason, and I have two examples here of how coumadin, um if you are not properly assessing your patient who's on coumadin, it can start to destroy, it can start to destroy your patient's tissue. And you think about the elderly who are placed on coumadin a lot. Uh I'm I'm not saying anything bad about anyone, but the elderly in nursing homes, sometimes they don't get very thorough head-to-toe assessments, okay? And um and you know, and I, not even nursing homes, anywhere. Sometimes nurses, we don't do our due diligence. And I'm saying this, I'm speaking to everyone, RNs, PNs, sometimes we're rushing. We don't do our due diligence on our head-to-toe assessments. We don't consider it as my uh major is medications or treatments. But if your patient is on coumadin and you go in the room, you give them P O coumadin and they're tucked in under the covers and you don't pull the covers back to look at them all day or for days, uh this could be waiting for you after several days on coumadin, okay? It's called coumadin induced necrosis. It's not as common to happen with heparin at all. But there's something about coumadin where people can have these reactions to it, okay? So these are just examples of that coumadin uh induced necrosis. So you guys, I want you to think, and 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 of course, the the antidote for coumadin is vitamin K. And I actually put there vitamin K one because you uh may see vitamin K one or vitamin K two. So I wanted you guys to know that there are two types and you would give vitamin K one, okay? Alright, so you guys now know uh the, you know the cause of it. I want you to start thinking about the treatment. What do you guys think uh the, the nursing interventions? What do you guys think the nursing intervention should be for a patient like this, okay? Uh, these are, these are level three NCLEX questions. Yes, I like that. I didn't know there was a level three. I like that. This is a level three NCLEX question. What, what should we do for this patient, okay? And I, and I know I am gonna get to the homework, you guys, I am. I'm, I'm just, I just, I've gotten deep into this, alright? Alright, so here we go. We're thinking about it, what we need to do for our patient here, alright? Uh if you have a patient or you spot this as a nurse, you will be able to identify this right away because a lot of people, um they do not know that coumadin has this power, alright? And I know in the hospital, I gave so many people coumadin. People just are on coumadin for their whole life, right? We give coumadin a lot on the med surg floor. So what you need to do is definitely stop the medication, okay? Do not give another dose of it. Um administer vitamin K one. Does anybody know how vitamin K is given? Anybody? How do you give vitamin K? Don't be shy, go ahead and put it down. Um it is, vitamin K is not given P O. It's, it is given as um an injection, okay? It is given as an injection. What kind of injection, IM or sub Q? I'm seeing IM, what kind of injection? IV, no, not IV. It's, I'm seeing IM, but it's not, it's it's subcutaneous, okay? We're gonna give that vitamin K one subcutaneously. You can also give the uh fresh frozen plasma and what that will help to do is put in blood into the patient's body, and this makes sense. Put in blood into the patient's body that is not anticoagulated, so it's not thin, it's a normal, um it's a normal consistency and it has the platelets in it and it's, it's ready to clot appropriately. So you kind of try to refresh the patient's blood source. Um some doctors may let the patient actually just go like this and allow the body to heal itself. Other physicians may wanna do a surgical debridement. So that would be, of course, digging out that wound. Others might just want it to just dry out and kind of see what's dead and what's alive after that has happened. So like, uh, let me, I'm just gonna go back for a second here. And I want you guys to notice the difference in the hand. So if you see that hand, you see that uh the hand is pretty much dry and dead. But because of its state here, you can see uh what tissue is gonna be good and what tissue is going to need to be removed. So sometimes it is kind of best to wait it out before you just go in there and start doing any kind of treatment, okay? So I, that's my case study for tonight, alright? That's my case study for tonight, and I think you guys did a great job applying the content to the scenario, okay? So very good, this is what I wanna see from you all when you're studying. This is how you pass NCLEX, uh not with so much strategies and hmm, no, you need to know the content, okay, in order to imply it. You need to know the content in order to apply it, alright? So get out your homework and let's go over the homework, shall we? Alright, so the first question number one on the homework. Question number one on the homework is just rounding. It's just rounding to the nearest whole number, and this was important because when we were doing the lesson, uh, when we were doing the lesson yesterday, a lot of people were making the very simple mistakes of not rounding appropriately. So that was uh something that I wanted to make sure you guys did because it would be like thirty-three point three and people would round up to thirty-four. And that is not gonna be great for NCLEX. So for number one, number one, A, on the homework was one twenty-three point eight. You should have rounded that up to one twenty-four. B, zero point eight two, uh you should round that up to one. C, fifteen point two five, should be rounded up to fifteen. And then D, thirty-five point thirty-five is only supposed to be rounded to thirty-five, okay? So, no, somebody, who said, Prezi said that, who, who said that, I'm sorry? Oh, um Alan said that that was like, that case study was like some pre-med stuff. I don't know, I think the nurses could, I think you guys did really good. I think you guys did really good on that, okay? Alright, let's go on, let's go on. Alright, here we go for the um intake and output, the fluid balance. The question was, a nurse is calculating the net fluid balance of a patient with liver failure. The daily intake is thirteen fifty milliliters. His output uh is two, 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 five, so two thousand two hundred and twenty-five milliliters. What is the net fluid balance of this patient? What say if you all? Yeah, I see it, mm-hmm. Net fluid balance, uh somebody said I didn't know what to do with this question and that was, the formula is there from day one, output minus intake. So you guys should have gotten a negative eight seventy-five. And remember, with a negative eight seventy-five, with a negative fluid balance, we know that this patient is dehydrated. So that may be an issue unless we want them to kind of be on the dry side, okay? And somebody asked, Denise asked, thank you guys, I'm getting the questions uh a little bit later, but I'm gonna try to keep the appropriate time and also answer your question. So let me go back here, um says, why didn't we not round a zero point eight two to zero point nine? And the reason is simple, because we have to follow directions and it said round it to the nearest whole number, okay? And also, it would not even be rounded up to uh zero point nine. It would be rounded to zero point eight, okay? Because that's eight two and not eight five, alright? So, let me move on to the next scenario here, which was simply, a nurse is calculating, a nurse is calculating the net fluid balance of a patient with congestive heart failure. The daily intake is thirty-five hundred milliliters. His output is twenty-one hundred milliliters. What is the net fluid balance of this patient? The formula is uh given before. So if you apply it again, thirty-five hundred milliliters minus twenty-one hundred milliliters, you get fourteen hundred. This is a positive fluid uh balance, okay? Moving on. And thank you guys for helping me with that. Number four was a easy one, it was multiplying all these numbers, but then I stuck in a zero, so that cancels out everything. So the answer should have been zero, okay? And don't beat yourselves up because it is those little, little things that get us when we come to the math. I, I thought that really, you um, I thought that usually you, you know, we're so worried about the formulas and things like that, but usually if we, we master the formulas, but we just make the little tiny mistakes like giving the wrong uh, giving the wrong rounding or giving the wrong liters or something else at the end of it, okay? So we just had to be very careful to follow the instructions. The fractions for five, it says twenty-five times one hundred and we should have gotten, I'm sorry, that's not zero, that should have been twenty-six hundred. Uh that's my, that's my mistake, I wrote the wrong thing down in the PowerPoint. But please post the right answer, it should be two thousand six hundred. All you had to do was add uh two zeros at the end of that hundred. So my mistake for that. Yes, thank you, Dorothy Ann Robertson for putting that up for me. Thank you, Grace, that is the correct answer, okay? Alright, uh six is if you had to change the fractions and solve them, the way that you do that is there, okay? So twenty-five over five would equal five. Forty-nine over seven would be seven and then seventy-eight over twelve equals six point five. Did you guys get that? Turning those numbers into fractions and then dividing them, okay? Alright. Perfect. Okay, question seven is a scenario, question seven is a scenario, okay? It says that a patient is prescribed acetaminophen sixteen hundred milligrams per day. The tablet comes in four hundred milligram tablets. How many tablets will be administered per day, okay? And you really have to be careful, you really have to be careful. Well, for that fraction, it di- it didn't say round to the whole number, okay? Um, the, you really have to be careful that you're giving the correct ending. So they want it how much per day, okay? Because sometimes it could be per dose or per day. And if we miss it, then uh we give the wrong answer, okay? So that should have been four tablets per day there. Good, good, good. No wrong answers there. So we have a scenario here, and for NCLEX, you guys have to be able to read orders. You have to be able to interpret orders. Those come up and they are so important, they are so important, okay? So we have an at-home nurse is caring for a patient discharged with two medications, okay? For a bacterial skin infection. She reads the following orders. Metronidazole, three pills, two times a day for fourteen days, and azithromycin, two pills, four times a day for the next twelve days, okay? So A, how many pills? This is just a question, A, how many pills of metronidazole must she take over fourteen days? And then B, how many pills of azithromycin must she take each day? So we see the difference in what uh what is being asked, okay? So let's do the first one. And it says, um how many pills of metronidazole must she take over fourteen days? So the first step is determining how many pills she has to take in one day. So the first step is determining how many pills she has to take in one day. So her prescription says three pills, two times a day. So in one day, she has to take six pills. So over the course of fourteen days, if we multiply that six times fourteen, that gives us eighty-four, okay? So yeah, you gotta be so careful, you gotta be so careful, alright? So that's how you get the first choice. That's how you get the first choice. Everybody see that? Okay, I wanna answer the second question now. And the second question is, how many pills of azithromycin must she take each day? So how many pills of azithromycin must she take each day? So we just read the prescription there, okay? It is two pills, four times a day. So two pills, four times a day is going to be eight pills each day, okay? Eight pills each day. Now, let me ask you guys this, I think I might have seen it. The question is, um how many pills must she take in total from both medications? So somebody put that, somebody put that up on the screen for me. How many pills must she take in total? Gotta count, count them. Waiting for it. I think I see it. Okay, you guys calculated out. Yes, good, 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 good. No, I see, okay, let me show you guys. Alright, so we gotta figure out how much, how many pills she has to take for the first day, uh for the first, I mean, sorry, for the first prescription over fourteen days, we calculated that out. And that was eighty-four pills, because she's taking six pills a day times fourteen days. Now for the second prescription, she is going to be taking eight pills a day for twelve days, okay? So eight times twelve is ninety-six. So if you add them up together, the correct answer would be a hundred and eighty, okay? A hundred and eighty. So we very well, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty is the correct answer. And you very well can get problems like this on NCLEX where it requires you to make multiple calculations. And we get all nervous, but it's simple addition and multiplication. You guys can do it. Take the time, just make sure you're giving them what they asked for. That's the only way you can get these problems wrong is by not paying attention to what you're being requested to ask. Cause you guys all know these answers, you all know it, okay? Alright, let's go on to the next question. It asks us to meter out this, oh, we gotta, oh, I'm sorry, you know what it is? My bad, it is going over, I said color every fraction red. So it's going over the numbers that are representations of fractions, okay? The numbers that are representations of fractions. What do you, what do you mean? Okay, hold on one second. People are asking, why is it um, hold on, why is it one hundred and eighty? Why is it one hundred and eighty? Okay, so it's asking you how much she must take in total from both medications over the next fourteen days, okay? Over the next fourteen days. So um it should be, alright, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but it should be eighty-four pills, okay? Eighty-four pills. And because, listen, her second prescription, I think this might be, might be where we're getting confused. Her second prescription is only twelve days, alright? It's not fourteen days, it's just twelve days. So you would not be able to, you would not be able to extend that prescription another two days to make it fourteen days, okay? So are we clear on that? Eighty-four, let me drag, look, I got my calculator out. Alright, ain't no shame in my game. I got eighty-four plus ninety-six is a hundred and eighty, okay? So that's right, right? We're all good, good on that? Alright. Yes, you cannot make that other one, um fourteen days, it's only twelve days. So this is where, this is where we have to be very, very careful. This is where we have to be very, very careful, uh because that is a very easy, that is a very easy mistake to make, okay? Alright, you have to be very careful, cause it's written there in plain English, is written there in plain English. Yeah, part C wasn't on there, I, I just made you guys do that, okay? I just made you guys do that right off the cuff to see if you would be able to do it on the spot. So gotta be careful, okay? And I know, I know, it wasn't on the homework, but I wanted to see if you guys could just get a question and be able to do it, okay? I know, okay, and I'll go back, the fluid balance is all the way in the beginning, so I don't wanna go all the way back to that, alright? So I'm going to, I'll, I'll go over it at the end, okay? Alright, and so don't give both meds over fourteen days, alright? Okay, let's move on. Alright, we're gonna move on, and yes, during these live reviews, you will have questions that you did not have on your homework, because that's the beauty of a live review, where you guys are able to think on the spot, okay? And that is very important for your exam, okay? Um, so here we go. A nurse is caring for a patient, a nurse is caring for a patient who is on a thirty-two hundred calorie per day, low-fat diet, okay? At the end of her shift, the nurse, the nurse realizes that the patient only, should say, ate eight hundred calories. What portion of the total amount of calories needed did the patient consume, okay? Give the number as a reduced fraction. And it should be eight hundred over thirty-two hundred. And if you reduce it down, we'll do nine, if you reduce it down, that is one-fourth, okay? Alright, okay, let's do, let's do number nine. Okay, so number nine, we had to identify the, we had to identify the numbers that weren't that were representations of a fraction, okay? So they should be in the first row, in the first row, they should be twenty-five percent. A hundred and twenty over seven, point six five, okay? Second row, zero point two. A over B would be considered a fraction. One and one-half would be considered a fraction. Five eighths would be considered a fraction, okay? In the third row, we have our mag, well, milligram over milligram. I was gonna say magnesium over magnesium, milligram over milligram, fifty percent, seven tenths, and zero point nine percent. Those were all the fractions that were represented, okay? And I'm gonna do it again, twenty-five percent in the first row, a hundred and twenty over seven, point six five, point six five. In the second row, zero point two is a fraction. A over B is a fraction. We also have one and one-half as a fraction, five eighths as a fraction. Milligram over milligram is a fraction, fifty percent is a fraction. The ratio, seven in ten parts, and then zero point nine percent is a fraction, okay? So perfect, perfect, perfect. Good job to you guys who got it all right. Let me go over here again, just to be sure, okay? So here, uh we have a daily, the patient, they're on a three, thirty-two hundred calorie per day. That's how much we want them to have, but the patient only ate eight hundred calories. So we need to know that, they're asking us what portion of the amount of calories did that patient consume? So out of thirty-two hundred, they only got eight hundred. So this is a fraction of it, okay? You see the fraction here, the representation of it? You cannot leave eight hundred over thirty-two hundred as an appropriate fraction. So you must reduce it by dividing eight hundred into the top and also eight hundred into um the bottom, okay? So you have to take the biggest number that goes into both. So eight hundred is the number that we choose. And eight hundred goes into eight hundred one time. And then eight hundred goes into thirty-two hundred four times. So if you reduce the fraction, okay? We reduce the fraction. Alright, and I have some questions on the, on the box for number nine. So I'm going to just go over them again here. Alright, so uh, hold on a second, eight hundred. Okay, um can you explain to me how seven and ten is a fraction? Okay, so seven and ten is a fraction because it tells you that the total number of parts here is in ten. There are ten parts here, but only seven are represented. So it's a fraction of the whole, a fraction of the whole, okay? So anytime it's not a whole number, it's just a part of it, which is just what a fraction is, okay? Does that make sense? Okay. Alright, let me move on here. And I'm sorry, here we go, number eleven, oh, number eleven, we had to do some matching. So it was match the prefix to its equivalent here. And I don't have a slide for this, I don't have a slide for this. So number one kilograms should be matched with C, okay? C, a base unit just means what the unit is, so that would be A, which is a one. Okay? Three, if you look at the prefix for decigram, it is going to be E as in elephant, E is in elephant. Four, centigram is going to be F as in frank, F as in frank. Five, milligram should be B as in Bravo, B is in Bravo. And six, microgram, microgram is D as in Dakota, D as in Dakota, okay? So let me, let me say it again, number one, C as in cat. Two, A is an apple. Three, E is an elephant. Four, F is in frank. Five, B is in Bravo, and then we have six, D is in Dakota, D is in Dakota, so perfect. Got it, you guys got it, okay? Okay, let me say, thank God, thank God I got this. Okay, we are moving on, we are moving on to, this is the homework, this is the homework. Here we go, we are moving on to, may you guys, I had asked you all to look up what these medical abbreviations stand for. Look up, look up, okay, so some of you guys, did you know what these stood for already? That would've been pretty cool. EC, if you see this behind the medication, uh it stands for enterocotic. And thank you guys for putting the right answers up, make sure they're the right answers, okay? Uh EC stands for enterocotic. CD is continuous dosing. SR is sustained release. And then EX is extended release. And remember, you guys, that when you have any medication that has these letters on the end of them, you never want to, um, you never want to crush these kind of medications. You never want to crush these medications because they're supposed to be, uh they're supposed to be delivered at a certain time. And if you crush them up, you may be able to alter the time release of that medication, okay? Alright, so yeah, so don't see, I know Steve, most people didn't know them, alright, but some didn't know all of them. So we're learning something, we're learning something, and I didn't want you guys to just guess on these. I wanted to, I wanted you to actually take the time and look them up, because that's how you do homework, okay? You do not just guess if you don't know something, you look it up. So when people email me and ta- and ask me, what is the definition of this? Or they'll say, what is the treatment for? Uh, I don't know, some people will ask me, what's the treatment for diabetes insipidus? Or what is diabetes insipidus? I say, you have to look it up, you have to look it up. Because you will remember it more if you took the time to look it up than just me telling you, okay? Just me telling you, right? Okay, question number thirteen, we have a scenario. And we're, we're using the flow rate here, we're using the flow rate, so. Here, this is check your work, check your work here. A patient is ordered two thousand milliliters of normal saline. The IV solution is to infuse over forty-eight hours. Calculate the flow rate in milliliters per hour, bum, 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 bum. So you had to use our formula, which you guys, I know you guys can do it. Okay, the formula for calculating the flow rate was total volume divided by time. So here we have everything, we have everything that we need. We have our total volume, which is two thousand milliliters. So we're just gonna divide that by time, which is forty-eight hours. And you would get, you would get, thank you for putting up the, the answer to that. You would get forty-one point six, 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 seven. But you have to round it up to a whole number, and that's gonna be forty-two milliliters per hour, okay? Perfect, good job. Feel good about that one. Let's do the next one, I think it's the same thing, um. It was just that it gave us two days, so the time wasn't correct. But we do have the total volume, a patient is ordered sixteen hundred milliliters of D five W I B. The IV solution is to infuse over two days. Calculate the flow rate in milliliters per hour. So we had to be able to change that two days into hours, and you should have picked forty-eight hours. Okay, you should have picked milli- uh forty-eight hours. So if you did that, you have sixteen hundred milliliters divided by forty-eight hours. And you get thirty-three point three, 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 three. But you cannot program a IV pump to deliver point three, three, three drips, okay? So you always need to round it up to a whole number, which would not be thirty-four. It would be thirty-three, okay? And yes, you can use a calculator during your NCLEX exam. You will be able to use a calculator during an NCLEX exam. So thank, thank, thank our heavenly Father for that. Okay, let's move on, let's move on. Are you guys feeling good? Are you guys feeling better about the flow rate? Uh, yes, you always want to round to the nearest whole number unless it tells you to round to the tenth. The NCLEX exam will say round to the tenth, if it wants you to round to the tenth, okay? But for these uh IV flow rates and drip rates, you need to round to the whole number. And I know I have um some PNs on here, do not be intimidated by this math. I don't care, people might say, you don't need to know this, you don't need to study this. Go ahead and learn it while, while you're here, okay? Go ahead and learn it while you're here, you can do this, okay? Now, this is may, this may not be something that you would see on your exam, but you can understand the principles of it. And you can understand how to use a formula and apply it to nursing, okay? Cause most, some of you guys wanna take the RN eventually anyways, so just study it with us now, okay? Alright, let's do the next scenario, let's do the next problem, okay? Um, a patient is receiving a medication in five hundred milliliters of lactated, lactated Ringer over four hours. The drop factor is ten drops per milliliter. What is the drip rate in, what is the drip rate in drops per minute? Okay, yes, what is the drip rate in drops per minute? And you need to use this formula, so this is this is the formula that we have to have memorized, okay? In order to be able to make this problem come out right. So the formula is simple, you need to look for the total volume of the fluid in milliliters, okay? Milliliters, and you need to be able to multiply that times the drop factor. And we're gonna divide it by the time in minutes, okay? So do we have everything we need in this scenario without having to convert anything? No, we do not. We have the total volume, right? The total volume is there, everybody say what the total volume is, alright? Uh, it is five hundred milliliters, we have the drop factor, that's no mystery. It is ten, but we don't have the time in minutes, we have four hours. So we need to convert four hours into minutes. And the way we do that is simple, it's a simple multiplication, right? In order to know it, all you gotta do is multiply the four hours times sixty, okay? Because there's sixty mi- there's sixty minutes in one hour. And since we have four hours, we just take our calculator, we do four times sixty, and that gives us to two forty. So that's how I got two forty down there, right? You following, everybody's following with me, perfect. So now we can do the formula, we just need to take five hundred times ten. And we will divide that by two hundred and forty. And that will give us twenty point eight, three, 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 okay? And we have to definitely round that up, and that is going to be twenty-one. You got it, you guys got it, okay? I see a couple of um, and I see a couple of wrong answers, but I'm hoping that you all understand it now, okay? Good, good, good job. Alright, so this is that drip rate formula. If you memorize the formula, you will be able to do any problem. You will be able to do any problem that you get. You'll be able to do any problem that you get. And I, I don't know, you guys can uh, this is the way I do it. If you guys have another way of doing it and it's working for you, use that way. I'm only showing you the way I would do the problem, but if you have a way and it's totally different, go with what you know. Um, but I'm just giving you the way I know how to do it, okay? Alright, let's go on to the next problem here on our homework, we are, we are number sixteen now. Okay, got a patient, they are receiving five hundred milliliters of D five W over forty-eight hours. Hmm, over forty-eight hour, over forty-eight hours or is it eight hours? I'm sorry, it's over eight hours. Oh, that's the right, I'm sorry, that's the right one, I apologize. Over eight hours, is that, not this one? Why I have it like that? A patient is to receive a medication in five hundred milliliters of D five W. Or on your homework, it should say over eight hours, yeah, okay, it has over eight hours on your homework. The drop factor is ten drops per milliliter, what is the drip rate? What is the drip rate? Alright, so it should say over forty-eight, I'm sorry, over eight hours. So if you have to convert over eight hours into minutes, then it would be take the eight times sixty, and you would get four eighty, okay? Alright, so the calculation, alright. So you would put in the formula, five hundred milliliters times ten, which is that drop factor. And if you divide it by four hundred and eighty minutes, you would get ten point four, one, 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 six. And if you round it up appropriately, it would be just ten, okay? Not eleven, just ten. Okay, good, got it, guys got it. Alright. Question number seventeen says, true or false? True or false, IV solutions in their bags are considered prescription drugs? What do you guys think? IV solutions, are they considered prescription drugs? You guys think? IV solutions considered prescription drugs? Yes, they are, they are considered prescription drugs. And you are not able to just administer them to anyone without uh, without a prescription, okay? So it's a safety issue right there. And all the formulas came from the previous day's homework. Okay, all the formulas came from the previous day's homework. Let us go to question number eighteen. This was another formula that you had to use for units per hour. A nurse is administering a premixed solution of heparin, twenty-five thousand units in five hundred milliliters of normal saline. The heparin drip is infusing at eight point eight milliliters per hour. The patient weighs fifty-five point two kilograms. How many units per hour is the patient receiving? How many units per hour is the patient receiving? And this is where you would wanna use the formula. The number of heparin units divided by the volume, that's it. The number of heparin units divided by the volume here, cause that's gonna tell us how much is in one milliliter. We need to know how many units of heparin are in one milliliter because it says the patient is getting eight milliliters an hour. So we use the formula and we divide twenty-five thousand units by five hundred. Twenty-five thousand units by five hundred, that should give us our fifty units in one milliliter. Does everybody follow that? Cause we're trying to see how many units are in one milliliter, so we can figure out how many units are in eight milliliters. So eighteen, fifty milliliters are in one unit. And it says that the patient is receiving eight milliliters per hour. So if we multiply fifty times eight, we get that this patient is receiving four hundred units of heparin per hour, okay? Four hundred units of heparin per hour. And yes, the weight, people have been emailing me and saying I did the problem, but I don't know what I'm supposed to do with the weight. And they're, they're just saying, where does the weight go? Now that I have the answer, where is the weight? And you will see that all the time, where you will be getting information, especially in math problems that have nothing at all to do with the problem, and they're a good distractor. So uh, the weight, i- it may say the patient got the medication at three AM. Uh, or you know, anything like that, that's why we have to remember the formula. You guys gotta remember the formula, and I do think that making flashcards is the best way to memorize these formulas. And right soon as you get into the test, write down all the formulas that you've memorized, okay? So in case you get a question, you're not caught off guard. Like, so the first thing I did when I took NCLEX, I went in there and I had a whiteboard that you could write on, and I went in there and I wrote down all my lab values. I wrote down all my lab values, and I wrote down the, I wrote down the formulas. And I can't remember now what formulas I wrote down, but I wrote down like maybe two formulas. And I wrote down about three medications that I, that I knew that I would forget every time I studied. So I, that's how I, that's how I did it. Because when you're in the middle of the test, you don't want to be stopping and thinking, oh man, what is the normal lab value for creatinine, that's the one I always forget. So I wrote down every lab value that I could think of, alright? So if you're planning on your exam, then go ahead and do that, okay? Alright, so this was the answer, uh, this was the answer for that. So I, I, I wasn't stopped doing that, Nancy, I don't know. Um, but I was not told that I could not do that. So I was able to do it. Okay, let's do number nineteen, let's do number nineteen. And of course, you guys, this uh, that's my way of doing it. So you guys can use your discretion, I, I don't know, okay, that's just what I did. Yeah, that's okay, number nineteen, number nineteen. Uh, heparin drip is infusing at nineteen milliliters per hour. This is question number nineteen, nineteen milliliters per hour. Available to the nurse is two hundred and fifty milliliters of D five W with twenty-five thousand units of heparin. Okay, the IV tubing delivers twelve drops per minute. How many units per hour is the patient receiving? How many units per hour is the patient receiving, okay? Now, that is using the formula to do, do, same formula we used here. We have to figure out how many drops are in one milliliter in order to see how many drops are in nineteen milliliters. Okay, and if we do the formula, the formula makes it so super easy, alright? Twenty-five thousand units divided by two hundred and fifty milliliters gives us a hundred units in one milliliter. All you gotta do now is multiply that by nineteen. And we get that this patient is receiving nineteen hundred units of heparin per hour. So that is the way you do that, okay? So it seems very confusing at first, but if you use the formula, you will be able to get them. And most importantly, you will be able to get them all right. You will be able to get them all right every time that you do it, okay? And that is the benefit of studying the math, not being intimidated by it, just doing what you need to do, okay? Doing what you need to do, and then um, question number twenty here. This is the last one, how do you feel about this nursing math? How do you feel about it? Select all that apply, and A, I feel much more confident. B, I have no idea what any of this means. Or C, I can, I will, I must pass NCLEX. Let me say that again, that's our class model for two thousand and eighteen, this is the class model. I can, I will, I must, I can, I will, I must, I can, I will, I must pass NCLEX. Easy, easy, we got this, this math, we can do it, we can learn it, and we can take hold of it, alright? We can do it, we can learn it, we can take hold of it. And we are able to successfully demonstrate our competency on this uh, on this, alright? You guys, can we do a maternity, can we do a maternity nursing next? There will be advanced study sessions, there will be more advanced, was this helpful to you guys? I think it is because um, what I do is essentially, I'm developing this book into critical thinking problems for you guys. So I'm gonna um, I'm gonna continue to do that, I'm gonna continue to do that for you guys. Let me, I do see you guys, hold on one second, I'm gonna go back to the input and outtake. I wish I could put up the I wish I could put up the day one for, yeah, formula, but it's okay, I'll, I'll put this up for them here. Soon as I find it. This is, I'm just gonna go over the um, the fluid balance formula. It's all the way in the front, okay? So here it is. This was the formula output from intake. Okay? Subtract output from intake. Subtract output from intake. Okay? Alright. Now, you guys, what I wanna do now, alright? What I wanna do now is to um, I'm gonna have Mark, Mark come in and just give you guys some motivation, alright? I'm gonna have Mark come in and give you guys some motivation. And I want to then address your questions that you have. I wanna try to keep it um, to a good time tonight. And then, and then we will be able to dialogue a little bit, okay? So, Mark, are you ready? Okay, alright, Mark is gonna come on, and then we're going to um, pick up from there, okay? So thank you guys, thank you guys, I am on standby right now.
Always, always, I need you.
Alright.
Alright, hi guys, okay. Um, so if you got the emails or if you're looking on the Facebook page, um, I added my own little assignment for you guys after you finish your homework. I asked Regina, she said it was okay. Uh, so I asked, you know, if you, if you finished your homework, if you would read uh Luke chapter seventeen verses eleven through nineteen. Luke chapter seventeen uh verses eleven through nineteen, I know a lot of you actually did, cause I saw some posts on the Facebook page, and I think that's amazing. Uh, so if you're familiar with the story, uh, it's the story of the ten lepers. I'm gonna read it for you, just, just give you a couple of words of encouragement, uh, that I think that we can all take and draw from it. Are you pulling it up now, I guess, on your Bible app?
Yeah, I'm looking at my phone for it.
Awesome, awesome, so this is what it says, right? Um, oh, in fact, uh, Lord, just give us uh, just, just take over your time right now, amen. Alright, here we go, um, Bible says that now it happened as he went to Jerusalem that he passed through the midst of Samaria and Galilee. Uh, then he entered into a certain village, uh, and there met him ten men that were lepers. Uh, they stood from afar off, and they lifted up their voices and said, uh, Jesus master, have mercy on us. So when he saw them, he said to them this, he said, go show yourselves to the priests. Uh, and it was that as they went, they were cleansed. And one of them, when he saw that he was healed, he returned and with a loud voice, he glorified God. And he fell down to his feet, and fell down his face to his feet, uh, giving him thanks. And as he was a Samaritan. So Jesus answered and says, uh, were there not ten cleansed? But where, where are the nine? Says, were there not any found who returned to give glory to God except for this foreigner? And he said to him, arise, go your way. Your faith has made you whole, or your faith has made you well." Um, I really, really love these stories from the Bible. It's something that I, I grew up on and, um, it's the easiest way that you can teach your kids, just by telling the stories. Uh, and, and so I just wanna talk a little bit about these lepers, uh, and what their response was and how they found their healing, uh, through the process, right? Uh, so we know that leprosy is actually an infectious disease, uh, and it causes severe, uh, severe skin, uh, disfiguration, discolorment and sores on the, uh, on the skin. It also causes damage to the nervous system, uh, particularly in the ligaments such as your arms, your legs, and, and other skin areas around your body. Now, it's an ancient disease, it's been around, uh, for a long time, and it's known for having the stigma, uh, of causing terrible, um, disfigurement, uh, and also to the, uh, you know, affecting the, somebody said they're not recognizable, uh, individuals that have leprosy. Um, also, individuals or patients with leprosy, uh, oftentimes had the stigma of being social outcasts or even shunned. Um, it might be interesting to know that in today, uh, in today's cohort, two thousand and eighteen, um, around the world, over a hundred and eighty thousand individuals have been diagnosed, uh, as having leprosy. The majority of these are in Asia, uh, and Africa, uh, nations. Um, but then also, you might be interested to know that about a hundred cases are diagnosed uh, of leprosy in the United States each and every year. Uh, and so a lot of the same social stigmas that existed back then, uh, exist now. Uh, so we're talking about, you know, real conditions, real individuals, um, who had a situation in their life. Um, and, and so we're gonna look at this situation and see how they dealt with it. So what I wanna just draw attention to is a couple of quick areas. Uh, one thing that it was that I like about it is that when they saw him, uh, they said, "Jesus, have mercy on us. Have mercy on us." Um, and I think it's kind of like a self-realization of essentially where they were, right? This is a situation that was out of their own control, they couldn't handle it. Uh, and the only solution was mercy. Okay, the only solution was mercy. Um, sometimes we have to kind of realize that oftentimes we are where we are in life because of the steps, uh, that we've taken to get there. Um, or it's our, our doing in a sense. Um, in other words, let me put it like this, um, I like to put things in the context of a relationship sometimes. Um, you might see somebody and you're wondering like, okay, why is she with him? Like, they, they don't, you know, they don't, uh, match up together. You know, he has a different type of lifestyle, uh, other than her. But the fact that they're together means that they're actually the same. Like, so in other words, where the partner is in a relationship and who the partner is, is a direct reflection of the person that links up to them. Like, it might look one way on the outside, but this is where they are as a whole. Um, and so oftentimes, you know, what we get is a result of the things that we've done, uh, or who we are at the time in which we're in that situation. And the only thing that can break us out of that cycle, out of that situation, for wherever we are, uh, is for somebody to come in and give mercy. That's it, right? So oftentimes, we get what we deserve in life, we get where we, we are where we are in life because of who we are. And the only thing that can change that situation is mercy. Okay? Um, and, and I, I can't prove it, but I know that you guys watching this, you have received mercy, uh, somewhere along your life. Okay, um, you haven't had the consequences of everything that you've done in life, have not come pouring onto you, uh, and that's simply because of mercy. The Bible puts it like this, uh, it says it's because of his mercies that we are not consumed. So they realize that the only way that they can get out of the situation that they were in, uh, is because of mercy, right? Uh, so the next thing that he says, uh, he, he doesn't go over, he doesn't, uh, touch him, he doesn't, uh, say, you know, you are healed. He simply gives this one command. The command that he says is, "Go and show yourselves to the priests." All right, go and show yourselves to the priests. Now, here's, you are a product of mercy, that's right, Mammy. Listen, he says, "Go and show yourselves to the priests." Now, the interesting thing about this is, the last time that they saw the priests, or the last time that they saw the priests in singular, uh, they were actually told that they could no longer be in society. Right, because if you were a leper, you had to show yourself to the priest. They would look at the spots on your skin, uh, they would count the spots, they would look at the color, the gradient. Uh, if there was hair on the spots, and they would make a determination, or, uh, they would examine you. And so the last time they had this examination, they failed this exam, and they were told that they could no longer be a part of the society, right? So they were told that they were unclean, and they were told that they didn't meet the standards, um, for the test that was issued. Uh, so in other words, um, their life was now on hold. So whatever, uh, dreams, whatever plans they had, uh, cancel it, right? Your life is on hold. So the, the wedding, cancel it. Uh, the job opportunity, cancel that. The graduation, cancel it. Because they didn't pass that exam, their life was now on hold and they were considered an outcast in society. But the amazing thing is, Christ told them, like, go and re, get reexamined.
Yeah.
Right, go and take the test again. Um, go and show yourselves to the priests and let them examine you. Now, and that's the thing, it's like, all right, so the last time you were there, they gave you, like, really bad news. They got the letters, they issued that, um, and said that you don't meet the, the requirements. Now you're, you have to go back to the same place that essentially rejected you or told you you didn't meet the standards. Again, you have to go back there. And so we have anxiety, we have, um, you know, real palpable physical issues going back with the idea of going back to a place of rejection. Right, nobody wants to go and be looked up and down and see, okay, are you worthy enough, uh, to be a part of this, uh, this society, or be a part of this, uh, position, or to be where you know that you deserve and you should be. Okay, all right, so, but nonetheless, he says, "Go anyhow." He says, "Go." And so what happens, what happens is that, that anxiety, that disappointment becomes a part of you if you allow it. And it could be years before you go back and are reexamined because of the feelings that took place last time. You guys, you, you get what I'm saying? All right, so you still have to go back. You still have to go and be reexamined. Now, listen, when he told them to go back and be reexamined, they were still lepers. I, don't miss this, right? They were still lepers, and he was, he, he told them to go back and be reexamined. And the Bible says that as they went, something happened.
That's it, right there.
Something, as they went, something happened. So some of you are like waiting to schedule to take this test. Some of you are waiting to be healed completely before you schedule to go back. But the Bible says that as they went, something happened. I wanna transition slightly and turn it on you guys. Now, a lot of you may have had that same examination experience at church. Right, so the last time that you went to church, um, you know, they, they looked you up and down. Uh, they, somebody maybe walked by you like you were unclean. Uh, they didn't talk to you, they treated you like an outcast. Uh, and because of that, you said, "I'm not going back. I'm not, I'm not going to be examined by the people who are gonna look me up and down and tell me I'm unclean." Um, but yet, and still, you have this voice, this, um, this admonition is calling you and commanding you to go to a place of accountability. And that's what the examination was, it's a place of accountability. Um, and it's a place of accountability, and trust me, it's worth going. Um, because as you set your mind to do it, and as you set your mind to go, there's healing in the process. All right, uh, so you may not see how you're gonna do it now. You may, it may look like the skin hasn't changed, you still have those spots of the past, if you will. Um, but as you go and as you take each step, you have strength in order to take the next step. It's like learning to walk, like, uh, our son, he's what, sixteen months old, I believe? Um, and, and so I remember, you know, just trying to help him to walk and says, "All right, come on, Salim, come on, Michael Salim, let's go, let's, let's do this." And as he responded to my voice and took one step, and another step, and another step, with each step, he struggled, but he was gaining the strength to take the next step. With each step, you gain the strength to take the next step. So you have to set your direction and keep going because there's healing in the process. There's healing in the process. And so as you study, as you sit down to study each time, you're gonna gain, you're gonna regain confidence. You're gonna start building your content knowledge, and it's gonna start making sense to you. You might not be able to pass NCLEX today, but if you have a date, if you have a process, each time you sit down, you're gonna build your strength. Right, you may not be where you wanna be today, but each time you move towards your goal, you're building your strength, you're building your, your, your process. So this is what he says. So as they went, they were all healed. All ten of them were healed miraculously on the way to the priests. All right? And now, one, he realized he was healed, and he came back. This was a Samaritan, he realized he was healed, and he came back, and he started praising God. That's right, I can, I will, I must, by the God's grace, you can achieve your goals. So the one, he comes back, and now he gives thanks to God. He worships, he falls down, uh, and he's just showing and displaying what we'll call simply an attitude of gratitude, realizing that the initial request was for mercy. And so once he received that, he goes back and he gives thanks. We love reading the testimonials, uh, that we get on the Facebook page and on the, on the messages and on the reviews. But I have to tell you this, listen, listen, guys, for every one testimonial that we read, for every one testimonial that you see posted, I guarantee you, there's ten other testimonials that have been unwritten. Right, there's, there's ten other people that have passed NCLEX, but just haven't come back and said, "Well, you know, I really appreciate it, thank you, Regina." They might feel that way, but they haven't expressed it verbally. Uh, so I wanna encourage you that if you are, if you have any of the materials, have any of the products, or if you have anything that you can just say positively, leave a page review, share, like, you know what I mean, just show gratitude, because here's the thing, all ten were healed. In this scenario, let's say all ten passed, but the one that came back, he says, "Arise, thy faith has made you whole. Arise, thy faith has made you whole." Regina said something that was very impactful on our first study session together, uh, this Monday. Uh, essentially, she said this, and I might be, you know, messing it up, but paraphrased. She said that if she was just getting on here to help you pass NCLEX, that would be lame. Right, if she was just getting on here to help you pass NCLEX, that would be pretty lame. And, and that's kind of where we started as Remar Review, but now, we're on a completely different level. Um, if you read the testimonials, a lot of people, they just bought the package. Uh, they, they did the, they watched the DVDs, they filled out the workbooks, they followed the schedule, they did the time, and they passed NCLEX because the process works. All right, so the process works, there's healing in the process, there's, uh, confidence in the process. But now what? Okay, so our goal is not only to help you pass NCLEX, we wanna take you to the next level of your development, uh, where you're like the one that came back, showed gratitude. The idea of being a Remar, Remar nurse is being somebody that's confident, that's knowledgeable, but most of all, it's about somebody that gives back. So we wanna put you in a position of leadership, uh, that you can help somebody else along the way and be an encouragement to them. We want you to be able to give back. And that's, that's the difference, uh, that, that you see. So there's healing in the process, but there's wholeness in the attitude. There's healing in the process, but there's wholeness in the attitude. Right, so we want you to pass NCLEX, we believe that you will pass NCLEX because the process is just amazing, it's that simple, it's almost down to a science. But we want you not only to do that, we want you to be in a position that you're able to give back. Right, so you realize your full potential, you realize your purpose, you realize who you are, and you're able to walk that out, all right? So when it comes to being a two thousand and eighteen Remar nurse, it's not about just passing NCLEX. We wanna say that that's a given, it's, it's a done deal, right? You're gonna pass NCLEX, you get what you need, you do the process, but we want you to be a Remar nurse in a sense that you give back, that you're giving your time, you're giving your resources, and ultimately, you are exactly where God would have you to be, uh, because that's what it's all about. All right, this nursing thing, it's temporary, uh, the job that you're looking for, it's temporary, uh, but there's things that are eternal, uh, that will, will last forever, and they're much, much more valuable. Uh, so in this year, two thousand and eighteen, uh, passing NCLEX, that's not the testimony, you are the testimony. All right, so that's what we wanna see. Uh, you are the testimony. Who you are is the gift. Uh, and, and so that's, that's exactly what we wanna do, is help build you to that point. All right? Um, I'm gonna say a word of prayer, I'm gonna close it. I see a lot of people saying, "You'll be back with your testimony." You are the testimony, we wanna see your face, um, you know, whatever you can do. Uh, here's the last thing I'll say, here's the last thing, I'll end with this. I promise, here's the last thing, right? All right, so when they went to the priest, okay, it wasn't just about being, them being examined by the priest, it was about them being able to be a testimony to the priests.
Ooh.
Right, so in other words, go back and show, uh, what the Lord has done for you.
Yes.
Right, so when you go and test, uh, you know, you going and testing and passing, that is your testimony. Like, you know, I wasn't there before, you know, I, I didn't have it together before, um, but now I'm back, and I'm gonna show you, uh, how God has blessed me by, by, by the test, right? So you might be thinking like, okay, I'm gonna go and they're gonna look me all over. But really, you get, you have a chance for them to look at you and look you all over. Right, you might be staying away from church because you went and last time they looked at you, but now you have a chance to go back and then somebody to look at you and see what God has done for you. All right, let's pray. Lord, thank you just for a time for allowing us to be, um, uh, just infused with your word. Uh, we thank you for the words of encouragement, Lord. I ask that you would allow them to see beyond NCLEX and into eternal things, Lord, uh, so that, that they can become the testimony. It's not just about the test, it's not about just proving, uh, you know, that they're a safe nurse or anything like that. It's just about them being able to display what you've done in their lives. So this is my prayer, in Jesus' name, that you would watch over them, keep them, and lead them in your perfect will. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Wow, I was not even, I never, I never, even when Mark preaches, I'd be like, "What you gonna preach about, what you gonna preach about?" He never tells me, he never tells me. So I am just blown away by that. Thank you, Mark. Mark is one of the best theologians in this area. Like, literally, um, there's so much in that, oh, the Lord just uses him. So I am so grateful that he was able to motivate us and encourage us through the scriptures, um, to, ugh, to just put everything in perspective. Because when you have that perspective, it's like, no weapon formed against me shall prosper, you know? Um, and I know, oh, gosh, I'm just, I can't get, I can't get myself together. That was a word. So I'm really grateful for that, I'm, I'm really grateful for him, uh, being able to do that for us. So, um, all right, now with that being said, I just kinda wanna just leave y'all with that encouragement. I don't even feel like, um, what I would say would be any value. I think we should leave with the word of the Lord on our hearts and minds, okay? So I am just, Mark, you gotta come back. You gotta come back, okay? Um, 'cause I just want to I just really wanna thank you for, um, you know, for taking the time to bless us with the, um, with the encouragement and the motivation that we need. Because I know that there are some people, um, that needed to hear that word. And God may specifically have brought them to this advanced study, not for anything that I had to say, or not for any presentations here, but for that word. They need to, uh, be able to take a second and just recognize God in His power. So I just wanna thank you for doing that for us, it, it means a lot, and it spoke to me. So I hope that we can have you back on here to do that again, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so, um, well, I'll just close with, uh, with that. We'll just close tonight with that for our study session for you guys, okay? And, uh, we will, listen, if you guys have signed up for, uh, the study sessions with us, we will definitely, uh, be doing more. This is February, it's the beginning of the month, so I do, I will have some planned for you guys throughout this month. And I will, uh, let you guys know as soon as we have them ready to go for you all. Because you know I like to do homework and things like that for you guys. So tonight, I'm just gonna leave. I know I was supposed to do the products and stuff like that, but sometimes there's other things that take precedence to that. So I can always come back on, um, at another time, okay? So I will see you guys, all right? I will see you guys later, that's what I wanna say.
All right, good night, guys, and God bless. If you have any questions, feel free to email, message on Facebook, we're in touch. Um, but just thank you for sharing your time with us. Um, go out and be amazing. Hide the word in your heart.
Okay, and my email address is support@remarreview.com. You can find me and connect with us there, okay?
Good night.
Good night.